Good afternoon and welcome to the Hamilton County Commission Board Meeting, August 15th, 2024. Going to ask everybody to introduce themselves on the dials.
Chrissy Rachel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerau-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon. I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Don Brugan, Assistant County Administrator.
I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President Alicia Reese. We start every meeting with silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas?
Yes.
All right. According to public comments, we have one card, Jeanette Sims. Jeanette Sims going once? Is she in the hallway?
She was just here.
Is Jeanette Sims in the hallway?
Richard.
Jeanette Sims? You have the floor for two minutes.
Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak with you all. I'm not really a public speaker, but there's some issues with housing that I feel that needs to be addressed. For one, the type of housing that homeless people are being placed in. My situation, for example, strategies to end homelessness helped me. I'm grateful for the help, but at the same time, it was a hindrance because the unit that I was placed in, I was unable to use the laboratories. I was told I had to use the laboratories at a bar that was adjacent to my apartment. I was unable to shower for over three months. I had to leave that apartment and go to my daughter's house to take showers, to the point where for a whole month, I didn't even live in that unit. The situation with homeless people is not everyone is horrible people. For me, for example, I became homeless because my daughter was the young student nurse that was shot in Bon Hill a year ago administering CPR to a woman who was shot in her face. My daughter wound up being shot herself. She'll never be a nurse now because she cannot use her arm. In helping my daughter with her situation, it hurt me because I did not have the funds for my household and my daughter's household, but I had to make that sacrifice because my three grandchildren that was with my daughter. There seems to be no accountability for helping the homelessness. And when I say no accountability, I want to understand why is it that these landlords are given an additional $2,000 in housing? And not only that, but you're paid double the amount of rent. But there's nothing being done for these homeless people that are moving into these units, nothing. If a homeless person is going into a unit, they need to buy blinds? For what reason? When you've already given this landlord nearly $20,000? They'll tell you that if there's an air conditioner, that's not in your lease. It doesn't have to work. Who is responsible for inspecting these?
Go and finish your sentence.
Inspecting these units. Who's accountable for it?
Thank you. I think out there you were working with some of the staff. You were talking to some of the staff, so I'm sure they'll follow up with you. Thank you so much. Last name Hurston or Houston? Hurston. What's the first name? Miracle? Okay. Welcome. You have two minutes.
My name is Miracle Hurston. I'm from Middletown, Ohio. I've been fighting for custody for my daughter, Journey Lane, since January of 2023. The grandmother, her mother unfortunately passed away, and I pursued custody of her. The court, there's been a lot of things that were misprocedurally done. The grandmother has custody of my daughter. And we've exhausted all of my disposable income. We've had numerous hearings. The document itself is heavily documented as to the findings and what has happened. There is nothing unsuitable, unfit about me in any ways whatsoever. However, July 2nd is when we had our oral arguments to the objections to the magistrate's order, and there's still been no decision. My daughter has been reaching out to me, telling me that she's in an abusive situation with her grandmother. She's been mentally abusing her. Her grandmother is bipolar, and that is also documented on her record. The grandma receives $69,000 in free money from having custody of the children because there's another child involved. However, she tells my daughter that she's poor. She can't buy her school clothes, shoes, or anything, yet she has zero expenses. I've documented this with the court. The court has made no response. I filed for emergency custody of my daughter, and then I told them about the situation. I have reached out to Two for One Kids. None of these situations, they care nothing about it. They just tell me just to wait, and it doesn't reach the level for them to even do an investigation. I showed text communication with my daughter, asking me to get her out of the situation immediately and have her in my care. The grandmother cuts off all communication with me. I send police by to do wellness checks, and nothing ever gets done.
Thank you. We really can't comment on an individual case, but jobs, who's here from Jobs and Family Services? Okay, is he right behind you? He'll step outside and talk to you about your situation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are now open it up for comments and motions. We'll start with Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you. I have a few things since we are on our every other week schedule. I want to start off by recognizing that a giant in our community has passed away. Dan Gilde, who was a good friend of mine, but a good friend to this county and to the city, passed away a couple of days ago. He was well-known in the West Side, especially in the Riverside communities, Sedansville, Sailor Park. He lived right on the river, and he spent over 20 years as a volunteer board member for the Cincinnati Recreation Commission, which is where I met him. I served 16 years, which was just a pittance compared to his 20-some, but he was a real leader, and this man led with his heart. And so I just wanted to recognize that passing. It's a severe blow, especially for those of us that knew and loved Dan Gilde. Secondly, I know Commissioner Reese, you were at the press conference just before this meeting, so I'm not going to go into any great detail, but it is great to see Kiker Construction and Development making some moves in the community and working on a 12-unit property down in Lower Price Hill, which is so close to Euler and Nehemiah, right where it needs to be to provide more housing in that community. So I was very excited to attend that press conference and the groundbreaking this morning. And then there was another groundbreaking. Best Point is opening a childcare facility, again on the West Side. It's actually in Greentownship. It's kind of on the border of Greentownship, Chiviet, and Westwood. And so I offered a proclamation on behalf of the board, that groundbreaking, yesterday. I wanted to mention the Bon Hill public hearing that we had related to the Mercy site. Very, very grateful for all the individuals that came out and commented, let us know what their concerns are related to that site. I was very grateful for their participation, and I thought that hearing was very helpful as we move along and try to formulate our decision about moving out onto that site. Also went to the Price Hill Well 20th Anniversary Party. Spent a lot of time in Price Hill lately, haven't I, on the West Side in particular? But offered a proclamation for their 20th anniversary. Rachel Hastings, the director, was there amongst others, and it was just a lot of fun. A lot of Sisters of Charity were there, so we had a very nice time at that event. And then a couple of other things. One Ohio, here we are. I know there was a meeting yesterday here locally about the projects that we're going to move forward to the One Ohio Board in Columbus. I am conflicted out, so I didn't get to attend that meeting, but at the same time, I was in Columbus, serving on the One Ohio Board on behalf of the region. And so some of the other regions are also providing their projects right now. So we're about number five or number six in line. So I hope that money gets to move as quickly as we want it to. It's been a long time coming, and there's a great deal of need in this community related to people that suffer from addiction, and I am very anxious to see those dollars hit the ground here in Hamilton County. And I'm grateful for the foundation members. We're all three on that board, but there are many, many volunteers that are helping us do that work, so very grateful to them. Megan Gosny and Abby Fritsch in particular, who are helping organize that work on behalf of the county. And then just two other things. One, I did want to mention that we did have the swearing-in for the Commission on Women and Girls, and we've got our new cohort in line. We've got 10 new, 11 new women and 10 new girls entering. It was exciting. There was a lot of energy in the room. I'm really looking forward to working with the Commission on Women and Girls again to provide some policy direction to the board that hopefully we will all agree to. We always have in the past, related to some of the issues that they identify as priority issues for women and girls in Hamilton County. And then very last, Gracie Reed, my intern from UC, this is her last meeting, and so I just wanted to recognize, Gracie, thank you for your service to the county. You've been a delight to work with, and she's just really been remarkable. So would you stand up for a round of applause, Gracie?
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you so much. Just a few comments. I had a meeting with the Human Resource Department regarding our 2025 employee benefits and just giving me an overview of what the cost may be for next year for our staff and provided me an me an additional overview of where we rank in Ohio as it relates to whether or not we'll have to raise prices or not. I was very happy with the presentation that was given to me, and I believe the staff will be also. I had the virtual meeting with the weekly White House briefing I have every Thursday. And then I reviewed treatment committee grants, as was mentioned earlier about One Ohio for addiction. I'm just really excited about being a part of the review process and making recommendations for people to get the help in the treatment, the prevention, the housing that they need if they're in that situation. And then I also attended the Bon Hill Community Council Meeting. It was a great meeting because the people in Bon Hill came out about the possibility of us moving to the Mercy Health Complex in Bon Hill, and they were very honest about how they felt about it. It was, I would say, primarily a positive meeting, and we're looking at possibly as a board moving forward for that move. I attended also the One Ohio R2 Board Meeting yesterday, which we looked at all the applications that had, in an executive session, excuse me, we looked at all the applications that had been reviewed and possibly will make recommendations to move forward to the state as Commissioner Dreehouse had mentioned. And I attended, as everyone else did up here, the Women and Girls Meeting, our evening meeting, and it was just awesome to see all these positive young women and also the adult women who have decided to mentor these young, young girls. Let's see, just a little bit of editorial, I guess. I have had time to reflect on quite a few things because I've been a little under the weather, but I'm almost 100%. But as a young lady talked about homelessness, this was on my list because I remember hearing a report about there are about 2,900 CPS students that are homeless. And I'm thinking, you know, they're right in the Cincinnati area, but what can we do to help those students that are trying to learn and live at the same time? I'm deeply concerned about it. I'm deeply concerned about the homeless population, as I always speak out about, because it's nice and warm now, but it's going to be cold soon. And I think even though we have partners and collaboration with those that are providing homeless shelters, I believe we as a board are falling short. And I'm not sure, when I say as a board, we've done everything we can do to help all of those that are in need, be it homelessness or rental or whatever. And I think as a board, we've done well, but I don't know if we need to just monitor those agencies that we have given thousands and sometimes millions of dollars for housing and for rental and all the other services that we provide. Really, to be honest, I'm a little tired of press conferences. I understand it's ceremonial, and the public needs to know what we're doing. I'm a little tired of groundbreaking, and I know that's something that we do to let the public know, but I need to see when we give these millions of dollars for housing, I've been saying forever, what about the tiny homes for maybe the homeless temporarily? Other entities, other states are doing it. I just think we need to be more aggressive. We've given millions, and it's not just housing, but I just think that we need to, we put our money where our mouth is, but then once we give these entities the money to do certain things, there needs to be a better follow-up, not necessarily by us, but maybe have them come in and give more regular reports to us. Okay, so let's see if that's it. When we talk about the homeless children at CPS, I remember reading about, at UC, there are thousands of young people in their cars trying to go to school, and we can't do everything. And I'm not saying we can, but I just want people to be more aggressive, and I keep bringing up homelessness because I can't imagine not having a consistent bed to lay my head. And as you know, I'm also looking at food waste, and we're looking at different entities like the Ritz and FC, they're doing well with food waste. We're still working with the Cincinnati Bengals. I was hoping before the season started, hasn't started yet, it's preseason, that we can come up with an agreement that all that food that they have left at the end of the day, end of the evening, we can figure out a positive way of allocating that food to those that are going hungry every night. So that's, I have one other thing. As you ladies know, once a month, I have a representative from the Inspire Program to come forth, and this is the day. And I want to say specifically, as we talk in the city and outside the city about stopping youth violence, this was one of the main missions of the Inspire Program because we felt, when it was brought forth to the board and the board supported it, that if we supported the coaches and the mentors and the community organizations, if we supported them to support their young people, it would keep, not only keep them out of trouble, but keep them busy in a positive way. So I will say, we've reached, and I said before, over 10,000 youth with this program, and Job and Family Services is going to pick up the third round of Inspire. With that being said, we have someone here, Robin Walker, who is the founder of Build Your Own Computer. And so I didn't know if you wanted, Alice, did you want to say something first?
I was just going to say, yeah, Ms. Robin Walker here, and she does a wonderful service for youth, helping them learn about computers and how to, I'll let her have the floor now.
Okay, very good. And we have a picture to put up there too, so you can see. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. I'm Robin Walker. I'm with BYLC Camps and Clubs, and I was a recipient in 2023 of the Inspire Grant, and I truly appreciate those funds. We are a nonprofit. We work very hard to raise funds to continue this program. This is our 10th year, and I'm very thankful that I've been able to do this for 10 years. Just to give you a little background, I did hand some handouts. So you have a one-pager about the program, you have my bio, and you have how the Inspire Grant has helped. We used it last year to buy supplies, whiteboards, projector, chairs, a portable projector screen, a Wi-Fi access point. So a lot of the supplies we need for our facility, for our classes. We teach kids from ages nine to 17 how to build computers, coding, robotics, electronics, multimedia, and we've evolved over the 10 years. We started as a two-week program where we taught just how to build a computer, which is where the name came from. And now we've expanded that to eight weeks in the summer, Saturdays during the school year. And last, or this year, we had our first spring break session, so we've continued to evolve. We've served over 800 kids, over, about 100 kids have taken home the computers. When they build their computers, they get to take it home. We're trying to inspire the next generation of computer technologies. We understand how important technology is to society and how it continues to grow and evolve. And as everybody today knows about AI and how that's having a major impact on society, we want to have more underserved kids, more minority kids involved in technology because there just are not enough of us in the industry. There are not enough women. And I, as an African-American female, have been in the industry for a long time. It's one of my goals to get more folks like me in the industry to have an impact and make a difference.
Great. Do we have a picture to put up there? It was already up there?
Yes, there was.
I was so focused on you. I apologize. Thank you. But you said something really poignant for me. You said eight weeks in the summer, and I think about, I don't mind is the devil's workshop. So think about eight weeks of time that a youth could think about, maybe I'll do this, I won't do this, it's not working out, I'm not working with it. And so eight weeks of time is just precious. So I'll open it up for my colleagues if they'd like to make some comments.
Yeah, open it up, Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you. I'm just making my way through the materials that were given to us. They build their own computers?
Yes. It's a four-week program where they learn the science of the computer hardware, and they have to pass a science test. We're big on making sure they really understand what we're teaching, and then they learn the assembly process to put the computer together, and that's the first two weeks. And then they learn coding, and they have to write a hundred-line adventure game program in Python. We teach a lot of Python. We do teach other programming languages as well, but our primary language is Python, which is very, very used heavily in the industry today. And we didn't really know that when we first started 10 years ago, and we started teaching Python, but it has really caught on. And if they complete all of those tasks, then they get to take the computer home.
I mean, that's just amazing. And I love that you're bringing people of color, I assume you have girls, into the STEM fields because you're right, there's such an underrepresentation, and this is the way to get them in there. When you say "we," it's yourself, and are there others that you're partnering with?
Well, my organization, when I say "we," BYLC Camps and Clubs, my staff, we are very small, there are four of us, and then we supplement in the summer with interns from like UC and Kent State and other universities to help us teach. And we've even had one intern stay with us throughout the year last year, and he's continuing on this year from UC. So that's how we supplement our staff, but we're a very small organization. We are trying to do as much as humanly possible with as little as we have, and we're always looking to fundraise and grow and get grants. And that's why the Inspire Grant was so very helpful because we could buy things that we just didn't have funds to do otherwise.
Yeah, well, 150 students is a lot of students. So I mean, I think this is, I'm not familiar with this program. It sounds like a really great program, and kudos to Commissioner Dumas for presenting the idea. We all supported it, but it takes somebody to think of it first, right? So really, really impressive. Thanks for what you do.
Thank you. Thanks. Yeah, I want to commend you. This is phenomenal and so important, bridging the digital divide, but I also want to thank you because you've been doing it before we had an opportunity to have grants, and you kept it together, and so many students that have come through that program, and I'm just so delighted and also want to congratulate Commissioner Dumas on this initiative. And I was, you know, it's a no-brainer for us to support it, but then also you coming in and talking about the program that you have and what you're doing at a time like this. Like you said, AI is about to take over everything. And what you're doing with our youth and using your experience, Procter &amp; Gamble, and giving back and getting back in the community is just phenomenal. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
We'd like to take a picture with you. Yeah, yeah, why don't you come up here?
Oh, there's Bridgette.
And she's still working.
All the way to the last minute.
Oh, I moved your chair, sorry.
Thank you. Do you have anything else?
No.
Cheers. All right, well, thank you. Yeah, the schedule feels like forever, and so I've got quite a bit. First of all, want to also commend Commissioner Dreehouse, the Women and Girls, and Mary Maui, and we had a great installation of the new ladies that will be a part of the Women and Girls Commission. We had it at the Board of Elections. And while we were there at the reception part of it, there was a parent who asked about the election and voter ID. And I just wanted to remind people that Ohio has a new voter ID law. It was passed by the state legislature, so you don't have to run down here. We had nothing to do with it, but it's a new law, and this is the first major election that it will be implemented. And so wanted to spread the word of what is required for you to go and vote. And you will have to have either a US passport that is current, a veteran ID that is current, a driver's license, Ohio driver's license that is current, a US military ID that is current, or a National Guard, Ohio National Guard ID that is current. And your ID on your license must match your voter registration. It's a little different because in the past, you could bring a utility bill, that you could bring your birth certificate. Those items will not be acceptable. 8,000 voters in the primary in Ohio were unable to have their votes counted because they did not match either how their ID was expired or some other reason. The Secretary of State has also purged 158,000, what he referred to as inactive voters in all of Ohio. And I believe, I was talking, I think, to deputy, our Deputy Director of the Hamilton County Board of Elections, I believe said 17,000 plus are in Hamilton County. So the moral to the story is you could go on the HamiltonCountyBoardOfElections.gov, and you could go and go to the voter registration, type in your name, and you can make sure that your name matches your license, your ID. This is very, very important because I've had a lot of senior citizens ask about this, and they don't care that you've been voting for 40-plus years. It must match the ID. So please double-check that, and you can do it on the Hamilton County Board of Elections website, or you can contact the Board of Elections, and they are happy to assist and help you, but it has to be done before early voting starts. So wanted to clarify that, and I will keep announcing it so people can get used to it and be able to ask the appropriate questions at the Hamilton County Board of Elections. Second, I didn't get a chance to say this, but the Cincinnati Black Music Walker Fame birf year, birf, one-year birthday celebration was incredible. Over 6,000-plus attendees. Everybody looked beautiful as they marched in. They were all the way lined, all the way down Marion Way. It was a big fun event, and we had our 2024 inductees, Shirley Murdoch, Donald Lawrence, the late Roger Troutman and Zap, and Randy Crawford, followed by a free concert at the end with Zap doing a tribute to Roger Troutman, and then by surprise, Bootsy Collins performed with them and Shirley Murdoch, and it was just a fantastic event. And I just want to thank everyone who came out, everybody that helped make everything possible, and it was just a fantastic event. We also got acknowledged with national media and other media, and we're very excited that we are now one of the top, rated one of the top black music monuments in the country. And we're only been there for a year, so I'm excited. And we've also, I'm told, hit the 30,000 mark of visitors without any real marketing budget. So just very excited. People still go down there. It's open 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and it's absolutely free. And then also, to our surprise, they, the person was there and they posted it, the DeBarge Music Family, Bonnie DeBarge, was at our Cincinnati Black Music Walker Fame, sitting in the balcony and going live and was saying how great and amazing it is. So those who are DeBarge fans and know L. DeBarge and the DeBarge family, it was just amazing to see her posting that. uh, it was just, uh, amazing to see her posting, uh, that. So again, thank everyone that was, uh, there. The week before, we had the Veterans Appreciation Day, Great American Ballpark. And, uh, I just, I know, uh, my colleagues probably have had a chance to say, uh, some great things, but I want to say Anson, you let that, led the project. And I want to thank everybody, all the folks, the committee and everybody that was involved in bringing that vision to reality. And I know everybody was nervous and they were telling me, maybe we shouldn't be at the Great American Ballpark. We don't know if we'll have enough people. And we had, you know, almost three, over 300, 3,000 people that came, families. I'm still getting positive, uh, responses. It was amazing because we didn't go there for the game. We actually used our Community Days. We've never used them in 20 years of having a lease, even though it was in the lease. And, uh, all the partners, 70 partners, everything you need to know if you're a veteran, help right on the spot. And then I want to give a shout out to Judge Terry Nestor, his Veterans Court. I've never heard of the court coming to Great American Ballpark and conducting court and then expunging a veteran on the spot. That was, that was incredible. So I'm still hearing positive reviews and, uh, the, um, I'm looking forward to, uh, doing it again and even having it bigger. But that was just first class, top notch, how it should be in treating our veterans. So I was very excited about that. Um, and we had good weather. Both, both events had good weather. So I just want to thank God for the weather, because they're outdoor events. Um, also I attended and participated, I believe it was last week. I don't know, it might've been the week before, uh, in a round table, uh, with Congressman Greg Lansman and Acting Secretary of HUD, Madam, uh, Secretary Adrian Toddman. Now for three and a half years, I've been writing HUD Secretary's Office, trying to get them here. That was my, one of my dreams. I told, uh, Jeff, I want the Secretary of HUD to come and see what we're doing here in Hamilton County. And, um, so I kept writing, kept writing. We almost had a date. Then the Secretary, uh, at that time was fudged, that she retired. I said, oh, gosh. And then ideally we got the call and the, uh, Acting Secretary, uh, Adrian Toddman says she was coming. And so, uh, was happy to, uh, be a part of that and host her at the Holloman Justice Center. I wanted, um, she got a chance to also see the 513 relief bus because we use also federal dollars. And she also talked about other funding that we may be eligible for, for the 513 relief bus. So I'm excited about that. And, uh, the Congressman has said he's looking at, trying to put some, something in the budget, uh, request wise. She said, there's nothing like this in the country. Um, I know others are trying to put some buses out there now, but our county, uh, is very comprehensive and we were out there, you know, first. And we've helped 20,000 people. So it was very, very impressive. Also, um, I did attend Bonne Hill National Night Out. Um, and the Assistant Attorney General was in town and came to the Bonne Hill, um, because that's my neighborhood area. And, uh, fortunately that I got hit with a dental situation. So then I was unable to be at the, the meeting, the Bonne Hill Community Council meeting. But my staff was there and I did get a report back. And I've lived in Bonne Hill for 20-plus years and now right down the street. And, uh, the feedback I got was that the community has a lot of concerns, a lot of concerns. So that was the feedback that I got. And, uh, I always go on the side of the community whenever I'm making my vote because they had some concerns that they sent to me about, uh, tax base. No tax base, nobody will be paying taxes. Um, I still believe that we should be asking mercy for more, uh, for leaving the neighborhood. It matters. Um, and it usually happens particularly to black neighborhoods. They make promises and everybody can walk away and don't have to, uh, adhere to those promises. So, um, so anyway, when that comes, we'll have those discussions. But, uh, that was the emails that they sent me. Um, and then I'm always in the neighborhood. So I ca, I got to live there and hear from the people every single day. Uh, the other thing is I had a chance to do a, um, uh, a ribbon cutting at the Peoples Apartments in Paramount Affordable Housing in Walnut Hills. Uh, the funding that we gave, we gave 33 million to CDF, um, and put into affordable housing projects. And, uh, we were there as a funder in that. And I was happy to represent, uh, the board at that event. And then I was happy today to represent the board at this particular groundbreaking in Lower Price Hill. Uh, it's 12 units, but this is a, um, minority, uh, owned business. And, um, Kai Lures is the principal and founder, Kai Kurt Development. And what was different about this one, and I talked about Mr. Bell, Director Bell, um, on the bold list and they were bragging. I was coming out of another meeting. I ran into Kai, never met him in a day of my life. He came up to me, told me his story. We had our stuff with CDF. We already was invested 720,000. He was thanking us and said, would you come out to this groundbreaking today? And, uh, I said, well, yeah, come, I'll obviously love to come out. But when he told me his story, I really said, I gotta be there. This gentleman lived with his son as a single father in pri, Lower Price Hill, at the property right next to where he bought the building. And he invested in that property and lived in it to the neighborhood where he said he was scared for his son to even walk around. And then he kept taking a little bit and rebuilding the area, just a little here and a little there and a little here. And then just kept learning and kept developing and then got under Russ Harris and, uh, Avondale Development Corp. And then he got other mentors and he just kept on little bit by little bit. When this gentleman broke down today, crying because of what he had to go through. And he kept on and now his, you know, son is doing well and he's doing well. And now he came back and bought the building next to where he couldn't even walk because it was an eyesore. And then through our program with CDF was able to get 720,000. And then was able to get money from what the city put into CDF. And then they had equity, but the one thing he said was that the bold program y'all got at the county is like no other. And it's like no other because we put the heat on. He said, it's real and Bell is out there putting the heat on too, as we done directed them to. He said, this is not one of those flim flammy programs that you just show up at happy hours and take photographs. You guys are really putting fire to it. And so therefore everybody knows that's the tone. And so now the opportunity door has swung open. And now you got the person who already was qualified, but never could get through the door. Is getting through the door. And not only did we do this many units, and then he showed all his, his staff, young men that wouldn't have had, and young women and men who wouldn't have had a job. And he done trained them and developed them. And then he's talking about letting them have ownership into the, into the property without putting any money up, but using their sweat equity. So now they become equity partners. I mean, this thing is unreal. I mean, this is definitely the blueprint. But my point was he cried so hard because he had to come from nothing. But he never gave up and he never knew that I'm going to buy this building. He said he would, but he didn't know how. And now his big sign is up. And that's where we were at, uh, Commissioner, uh, Vice President Drehouse was there as well. But that's where we were at. And to me, that's $720,000 meant something. I mean, it wasn't just a, oh, we gave 350, oh, we got 720, this was real. So, uh, Mr. Bell, we got to somehow bring him in and some, but this program is the blueprint. And Councilman Reggie Harris and Vice, uh, Mayor, uh, Kearney also said, this is, everybody looking for a blueprint. This is it right here. So I was super excited about this, this, I'm super excited what's going to come from this. And, uh, they're also doing another project with Price Hill Will, um, down the street. They announced that as well, uh, that our, because of our funding, they're able to do. So our funding is ma, does matter. However, it's just so much, so it's been so much neglect. And, uh, I do agree about some of these organizations we're giving money to. And we don't know, did it ever hit the people? They give us a little report, but did it hit the people? $20 million and I've been on them. Strategies to End Homelessness and we, it don't seem like we ending it. It just keeps becoming bigger. But tw, I guess I have a problem when I do 20 million and then somebody comes up here and says, they don't have no toilets, uh, they didn't have nowhere for me to take a shower and we voted on 20 million. I just, I got a problem with that. So I agree that we definitely need to keep our eyes on where is the money going and who and how many are getting, um, are getting help. So those are my things. Also Wenton Ohio, I do want to also say, uh, was proud. I know Commissioner Dumas and I are both there. We had to go through a lot of the, uh, and everybody on the board, we had a lot to go through. And those were not small packets. These were some big thick packets that we had to go through along with other committee members. And I want to thank all the committee members that are volunteering to be on this board. Uh, because Vice President Drehouse, when you go up to the state, let them know, this process is way too complicated for the amount of money. It's, and it's too slow. They need to look at, as you've indicated, what we.
Already told them it's too slow.
Yeah, how we do it in Hamilton County, they should just replicate our version because we've been able to do it and do it right. And we've been able to get money to the street before, before they have. Because it's very hard for people who volunteering to take up this much kind of time. Um, but I'm sure that would, I put that on the record. But, um, again, I want to thank everybody that, uh, participated in, uh, in that process. And then I want to thank our, um, Megan and her team for what they do here because we got our money on the streets and at least start helping people. So that's what I have. Mr. Brugan, you are filling in for Mr. Aludo. And now we have, uh, the Prosecutor's Office here, so now we can take care of real business.
Absolutely. We have one by leave item for you today. Happy to bring Resolution 20 forward authorizing the purchase agreement for property at, on Gray and Wenton Roads. This is hopefully the land for our new animal shelter.
Okay. Well, let me open it up. Vice President Drehouse, any comments?
I just want to say hurrah. Here we are finally, um, moving on this property. I get a lot of calls in my office about animal care. And so I just want to note though that, so this is about the facility on Gray Road, which will be the new location for the new facility. We are also investing in the Dane facility. Remind us how much that.
That's correct. There's about $6.2 million worth of renovations that we're doing to the Dane facility in North Side.
Which is housing the animals currently before we get up and running at a new site. So I, we're investing heavily in animal care. And I just wanted to note that this isn't the only investment we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas, I know you got something to say on this.
But anyway, it just shows that we not only care about the people, we care about the animals. And so we realized we had to get a new facility. And I'm just so glad that, and it took a while, but I'm just so glad that we're moving this forward. That's all.
Thank you. And once we pass this, there'll be what due diligence done on the property?
We have 180 days of due diligence. So within the next six months, we expect to be back here closing on the property.
Awesome. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve by leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Any other?
That's all.
Okay. All right. We will go to the calendar now. Brugan, we got item number one?
Yes, and, and Sarah is here to talk to us about item number one.
I snuck in on you.
It's quick.
I'm efficient. I only have one resolution a day and that is item number one with the City of Madeira for $431,100. This is under our stormwater grants. This is the last one for the stormwater grants for this round. Um, this project will include replacement of stormwater conduit and structures along Euclid Avenue. The additional work includes lining and or repair of an existing culvert just west of Tiki Drive. The project was initiated because, um, of a storm sewer inspection along Sycamore Township when the storm sewer was found to be in poor condition and failing condition. So our grant came at perfect timing for them. Um, if the systems do completely fail or continue to deteriorate, it is going to cause, um, structural flooding and it will also cause, um, just overage of water and then blockage and all of those wonderful things that stormwater that I'm learning is so very important does. Um, the project will prevent nuisance flooding along Euclid Avenue and all the adjacent properties. Um, unfortunately, no one from Madeira was able to actually be with us here today. So I'm able to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Open up Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you, Sarah. Thanks for the information related to this. So this is the last grant in the series of grants that we had allocated money for.
Correct.
So I hear a lot about this, uh, stormwater needs, sewer needs. Um, so I do want to, um, yeah, it, it's just such a, a big need in, in this, was this ARPA?
This was ARPA funding and it was, um, overall 3.6 million that we did in stormwater grants.
So I just, this is an ongoing issue. I, you know, I know we talk about this in terms of the impervious surface fee and trying to create a fund, um, that's not related to the general fund to address some of these issues out in the community. So I'm just, uh, looking forward to those ongoing conversations. You did say in your comments, and I don't know if you meant to say it, um, that this is the final piece of this round? Does that, are you implying there's another round?
Um, we will, to be continued.
Okay. All right. But there's no funding in any other round right now.
Yes, we are continuously looking at, um, obligation of funding and there was still some money left in our stormwater. Um, so we are just cleaning up if that other project is completely out and what we might do with that.
Or federal grants.
Yes, potentially more federal grants.
Okay. All right.
I better move very quickly, you know, obligation this year.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, Sarah, for your presentation. I will have to say though, it rubs me a little the wrong way, not to have a representative from Madeira. We told them it's okay or whatever, but 431,000 is a lot of money. And so I wrote a note on here, hold the money till they come, but I'm not going to. But I'm just making it that I have a problem with people that can't come in for this amount of money. Send the secretary, whatever. So anyway, that's all I have.
Echo that.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, we'll, we'll make a motion this time to approve item number one.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse? Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brugan, the consent agenda?
And I'm happy to walk through the consent agenda if you'd like.
Yes.
Okay. Item number two is budget adjustment number 26. There's a number of pieces involved in this. We have some, um, we have about $250,000 worth of increased security services at the courthouse and 250 William Howard Teft. We're seeing in our insurance liability, um, premiums come in higher than expected. We're adding $100,000 for building insurance in non-departmentals. There's $300,000 in here for the Inspire Program. Um, this is, this is dollars that at the beginning of the year, we didn't know if they would be spent directly in JFS or be reimbursed. They will be reimbursed, so we have to appropriate them in the general fund. $70,000 worth of advertising expenses for the Veteran Service Commission. Um, and looks like just under $2 million worth of additional appropriations in the two engineer funds that will allow them to do additional transfers out to projects. Um, item number three on your agenda is, um, is the, um, bid awards for the purchasing department at $3 million for the month of July. We have a Dodge Durango in the Sheriff's Office and item number four. Um, item number five accepts, um, a purchase order for Common Police Court. This is computer hardware on a state term contract. Six and seven are both authorizing credit card late fees in a couple of departments. Um, item number eight is our annual license renewal for Microsoft 365 at $400,000. at four hundred thousand dollars. Um, item number nine is, um, authorizing a grant agreement of, a community revitalization grant agreement for the village of Woodlawn. This is consistent with the recommendations made in June for these grants. Um, item ten is a waste reduction project grant from Environmental Services, also to, um, the village of Woodlawn. So they can buy a chipper and restore brush pickup in the village. Um, item eleven and twelve are both journalizing collective bargaining agreements that the commissioners have previously approved, I understand. Item thirteen adds six positions to the table of organization for the Office of Family Voice. Um, item fourteen is report of actions for bid awards, um, at J, um, for, um, yes, for, yes, for JF, uh, report of actions of JFS. Item fifteen is a data sharing agreement with the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services. Um, item sixteen and twenty-eight are both foster care service agreements through JFS, a total of four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Item seventeen through twenty-three, as well as item twenty-five, are residential treatment agreements, JFS, eight point four million dollars and eight different vendors in those contracts. Um, skipping to item twenty-four, um, is a family preservation continuum services. Um, contract in JFS for two hundred thousand dollars with, um, National Youth Advocate Program. Item twenty-six for substance abuse, swabs and testing at JFS with, um, with forensic fluid laboratories. Um, this is just an amendment to the agreement, there's no dollars associated. Items twenty-seven and thirty-two are transportation services with MTM Transit and Valley Transportation for twenty-two point nine million dollars. That's also JFS. Um, item twenty-nine is truck driver training, um, for SNAP customers with Napier Truck Driver Training, um, three hundred and thirty-nine some thousand dollars. Item thirty is gender-based domestic violence education training amendment. No dollars associated with that. And item thirty-two, no, thirty-two we did. Um, and that brings us to the, um, liquor permits in the sheriff's office at item thirty-three and monthly, um, investment report from the treasurer at item thirty-four.
Thank you. I'll open up for questions, Vice President Drehouse.
Wanted to highlight items nine and ten related to Woodlawn. Um, glad we are in partnership with Woodlawn related to the Community Revitalization Grant and the Environmental Services Grant. Um, and I, I do wanna note the, um, gender-based domestic violence education training. I think it's really important. I'm glad to see that on the agenda. Um, I do have a question about, uh, part of the budget adjustment related to the Veteran Services Commission. We have that unusual situation with Veteran Services Commission where if they ask for a certain amount, um, you know, some provisions kick in. So this, these dollars, are they, um, is it money that's been spent? Is it money that they anticipate spending? Um, and will this fold into their budget request, or is this separate from that?
Um, this is probably a bit separate. This is specifically related to, um, they were instructed, they were instructed internally to try to encumber dollars at the end of last year for advertising. But given the vagaries of our encumbrance process, they were unable to do, to do that. At the time, I said to them, you know, move forward as is. If you need additional dollars for advertising related to those, that lack of encumbrance at the end of last year, we'll make that good for you this year.
So, and this is, so this is a situation where, and we've said this to the VSC, if you need more dollars to do the work you're doing, come ask us, and we are very likely to pass o- on those dollars. So I, I do wanna say also that I think I, um, I think I've heard my colleagues say the same. We are very interested in having the Veteran Services Commission, um, offer, not only offer more services, but do a better job of advertising that they have services available for veterans. So I'm glad to see this, um, this happening. I'm, and I'm also glad to hear the explanation that, uh, cuz that fits into the narrative that, my understanding of how this works. So, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. Um, John, item thirteen, um, I was just wondering, uh, why the organization, the money is through the administration and not through JFS?
Mm-hmm.
Um, is there a reason for that?
And I, I can speak to that a bit, but I see any number of folks in the, uh, in the, um, audience who probably could speak better to the Office of Family Voice than I do. But my understanding is, you know, this is an office that sort of provides feedback to JFS, but we want to maintain some level of independence of that office. So the employees will be in county administration. JFS will be fully reimbursing the cost of the program.
Okay, they'll be reimbursed, okay. Thank you. Um, then I have another editorial guest. Um, I think we've done a great job with our funding, uh, with this, uh, federal money that we've gotten in specifically. The revitalization grants have been awesome, and it's done exactly what we wanted to, to do. Um, but as I was saying, we talked about, I talked about sustainability for these entities that we're giving money to and how don't depend on it. Well, the money runs out. We have to designate our, our ARPA money by the end of the year. And so I was just saying, as we look at sustainability, um, for our recipients, that we also need to look at this board and the county budget being able to sustain itself. I'm really deeply concerned about, uh, our gap in our budget right now. And every time I read about it, it goes up and up and up. I, I'm sure we'll get where we need to be. Um, but I'll probably be saying more no's on a lot of the new initiatives cuz we just knew we could not sustain those new initiatives. And, uh, we've done great things, but we have to be able to sustain our own budget. And I'm really concerned about the gap and as it moves forward. And I'm very confident in our staff, finance staff, that we'll be able to get where we need. But just to let the communities know, we are not, for me, anyway, we're not, I'm not gonna be able to say yes to things like large event grants and things like that. I'm not gonna specifically say what. But I'm deeply concerned about our budget and being able to maintain the basic, uh, services, uh, for our people. Um, and I have one other thing. Hold on one second. Okay, I think that'll do it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, my question, though, is adding people to the organizational chart. Cuz that's the ongoing expense, uh, hiring more people, uh, enlarging government. And I've got some concerns about that because, um, you know, grants, they're done every year. But when you start putting people on organizational charts, they're there forever. And so my question is, if we're going to talk about we got a gap, should we be moving forward with items like number thirteen? That we've been talking about this Office of Family Voice. I know since I got elected and maybe before then, and we, yeah, before. And so is it wise for us to be moving forward with adding, uh, three people, uh, to an office that ain't even got started, really? Not just this office, but just looking at, you know, when you add people to the table of organizations, they're in there. The other stuff we're doing, it's year by year. We can make a decision if we got it or we don't. But we've got, you know, every program needs three and four people to do. I'm more of an entrepreneur, and entrepreneurs are out there doing, one person can do three, four, five jobs. And we kinda have one person that gotta do the paperwork, and one person gotta answer the phone, and then one person got to make a flyer. We just can't move like that. So I'm just wondering, with the forty-plus million dollar request gap, is it wise to move with new employees, with salaries and benefits?
I, I would note that the new employees for the Office of Family Voice are fully reimbursed from Job and Family Services.
Okay, good.
Right now, our gap is general fund, not, not in JFS.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't doing something bad.
To your point, though, could, could you elaborate a little bit? Cuz you mentioned three positions, there are six positions.
It's, it's a revision of, I think, Robert-
Yes, please, Mr. Bell. Wait, we gotta get you on the microphone.
This is a collaborative, some commissioners, and I understand your concern about this. But the thing that excites us about it is that, um, JFS really likes, wants this to happen as well as we do, as the board does. And that we're gonna, we're, we're gonna do a pilot, and we're gonna have one parent partner, I mean, parent partner coordinator, that helps coordinate the whole thing. Then five parent partners that are gonna work with five, five to ten families. And, and it's a best model practice that we've, we've gotten from the state of Ohio and other places, but it's totally reimbursed by, um, Job and Family Services. Doesn't, we don't have to make it out of the operating budget. And it, it, it's gonna be able to do some amazing things. We're gonna have a presentation for you guys on the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
And, and, or twenty-seventh, or that Thursday, last Thursday. So we're gonna, we're gonna tell you more about it. But we're really excited about it. JFS is totally behind it. Uh, we, uh, we're looking at sustained funding, and it's coming from, you know, one of the levies.
Yeah, that's my problem. But I would go along with it, but my point, you've been running around as one person for years before we were able to give you-
Yeah, but look how broke down I am.
I know, that's what I'm saying, if we, if you were doing more-
I agree, I agree.
With two people, but I, I just wanna put that out there. Cuz when we start talking about, for me, everything on the table, not just big events grants. I'm looking at organizational charts, I'm looking at levy dollars that's just been sitting around. And not, and we're, we're creating things to spend the money. So I got a lot of stuff, but we're not here to talk about the budget yet. I just wanted to make sure if we move forward, it doesn't, and, and as you're saying, it's not gonna tie any of our hands.
Any of our operating-
Got it, cuz it's fully reimbursed.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, we actually are talking about the budget cuz all of these are allocations. And, but I just, just wanna make it very clear that my concern is about the general budget, not the JFS budget. Cuz the more I review, um, the services that they're allocating and the positions, um, just completely, uh, in support of how they're using the levy dollars. So I wanted to make it clear, just the general budget is my concern.
Yeah, yeah, but this budget is, the budget that we're doing has already been passed. We went through a budget process, and now all we're doing is implementing. That's one of the things I kinda don't like about the county when I've been to the other, uh, entities. Once we pass a budget, it's over. But in the county, we pass the budget, and you might not see it again to implement two months later, and then we like, what, well, what was this? But we already had passed it. So the budget we doing now, my understanding, was the budget that we passed. And as we go forward, then we're, we're getting ready to get into a new budget. And that's when we'll, I guess, have those conversations.
Absolutely.
And I just wanted to make sure nothing on here was tying my hands when we get ready for the new budget. That was my, uh, my concern. Vice President Drehouse?
Can I just offer, uh, just a comment related to the Office of Family Voice? Um, so all six of these positions are related to the Office of Family Voice. The money's coming out of JFS, it's not general fund money. But I do wanna lend the context of this conversation started back when Todd Portun was here. Uh, because we went, I went to a meeting, I don't think Todd joined me. Uh, Victoria Parks was there, Cecil Thomas was there. And we talked to parents of children who were in the foster care system, who were doing everything they needed to do, working their plan to get those kids safely back home. And there was frustration as to how they could access JFS and what was available to them to try to speed up that process or at least have it continue to, to proceed. And so that's what this is about, is, is, um, trying to help the families that are already involved in the system try to get those kids safely home as quickly as they can by working the plan that, that's been given to them. So this has been, I don't know how many years ago that was. It has to have been five or six years ago that we initiated this. It was a list of things that we were doing collectively, Moira Weir was here, uh, related to JFS. So this one has taken a long time to get in front of us. But I do wanna emphasize that, um, it was always intended to come out of the JFS dollars, and that's where it sits. Uh, but long history on this one.
Well, I wanted to remind us, we were in the consent agenda, and, uh, this was my question.
Yeah.
I got more questions on the consent agenda. So, uh, but thank, uh, my main thing was that this doesn't hinder anything going forward. Um, the other question I had was on item number two, uh, the adjustment, and it mentioned about insurance. And I just wanna in, uh, indicate that, uh, on the insurance, I had gotten some folks who reached out to us, and I passed them on to, uh, Jeff, and I brought this up, should be in a bowl list. I wanted to make sure, I feel like the insurance, I wanted to make sure there's a fair process for, uh, minority firms to also bid on this, uh, particular item, insurance.
We'll be, we'll be sure to follow up with risk management on that. This is just setting the table for the dollars that, um, that are already committed.
Okay, cuz I, that was one of the areas that I think, I don't know, but sure, I think one of the people came to one of our meetings. And, uh, yes, you wanna say something?
We just had a meeting with Jeff, Frank, and the risk management group about that on, on how to look at, how can we really do a better job with diverse companies and the whole insurance packages and stuff? And so we're working on that, and we've come up with some ideas that we're gonna share with you once Frank and, and Scott, um, the, um, our risk management takes a look at laying out the plan. And we're, we're coming up with a plan. And they've used my department and equity framework and everything to try to figure this out. And I think we're gonna get somewhere.
Awesome. I just wanted to note that to the board that that was a, uh, concern that I had brought up, uh, in this, uh, consent items. That's, um, oh, the drivers, uh, is that the CDL program? Mr. Brugan, is that what that is?
I believe so.
Twenty-nine.
Item number twenty-nine?
Yes.
This is a truck driver training program.
I, I just wanted to compliment that program, uh, that, um, JFS does, uh, helping people get the CDL license and then connecting them with jobs. If I'm not mistaken, the, the connection of jobs is on ninety-nine percent, maybe a hundred percent of folks getting connected. So definitely, um, happy to support that. And I wanted that to, uh, be noted, uh, as well as the two items for Woodlawn. Um, excited to support that as well. Yes, Commissioner Dumas?
I just, uh, just a general comment, and I don't know if John or the lawyer can an- you don't have to answer it now. But, um, Commissioner Reese brought up something really important about how we had already, um, passed a budget to do certain things. And I asked Jeff, what if we have already passed a budget? What is the process? Because we make mistakes and we change priorities. And what is the process? You don't have to answer now. If we say, okay, we, we voted on, like, the pitch program that's coming up. We voted on that, and maybe we don't wanna do it now. Maybe we don't have the money to do it now. I know we committed by passing the full budget, but how do you make a change on something that as a board, we, uh, voted to pass?
Well, the, the budget adjustment resolutions we bring forward are, are doing that all the time. They're going in the other direction from what you're talking about. These are adding dollars that we missed for some reason, or we've seen a change that requires additional spending. Um, in the case of something that we've passed and we've chosen not to do, usually we simply trust our administrators to not spend those dollars rather than de- delegislating.
Okay.
So.
That helps, thanks.
Thank you. And I think as, before we go into this next budget, and it's not today, um, maybe as a board, we should look at it because everything is a give and take. And all of us have priorities. And maybe I won't go with something if, you know, something that the constituents that voted for me wanted me to go for. And if we agree to something, cuz my word is kinda bond, unless we come back and say we running out of money, I don't wanna go in that process. I'm not gonna do it because we can't, otherwise, we don't need to have a budget. But if something one of the other commissioners want, and I might be like, uh, but then my constituent wants something, you say, okay, well, we can work together, then that's what I want. I don't want something that, uh, one person's stuff gets moving forward, and the stuff that I may want is getting challenged. That's why we got a budget, and that's how we've been doing it in every government that I've ever been involved in. Unless we have a situation where the bottom's falling out and losing money, then that's, uh, that would be kind of different. But for me, I can't be, I'm be on the record. I'm not gonna do a budget process. And my constituents, I'm bringing forward something they want, and then we vote on it. And then soon as it come up, you get what you want, but then when I get something, you got a problem. That's just not, that's just really not how you do it. We do it at the state, we didn't do it at the city. I've never seen that process before. So that would be hard. Uh, when I give my word, that's what it usually is. So, but we'll have those discussions as we go into the new process. Uh, right now, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreyhouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. I'll make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to 12122G4 to discuss collective bargaining.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreyhouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.[1261.04]